Tom is getting his, he can't seem to get logged on, so I'm going to talk to him offline for just a minute.
A little bit of technical difficulties getting the chair here, so just bear with us just for a moment. While we're waiting for him, I want to introduce you to our city attorney tonight is Keith Collins. He's here joining us on in lieu of Ryan Jones.
Hello, everyone.
We're just waiting on our chair to get that link and then we can get started.
Bear with us just a little bit longer, please.
It looks like he is here. Do we have everybody?
My apologies, I'm here.
Welcome Chair Sheeler, where I think we are ready when you are. I did briefly introduce Acting City Attorney Keith Collins is with Ryan Jones' firm. So he'll be here tonight. And with that, we're ready when you are.
Chair, are you there?
Did we lose him? Oh, I see his camera still.
Camera, yeah. Maybe he's having some technical difficulties. Chair, we are ready whenever you are, sir.
Commissioner Van Duiker, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Well, are we going to do roll call, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Engel.
Here.
Commissioner Magnavowski.
Here.
Commissioner Nishimura.
Here.
Commissioner Turner Mike.
Here.
Commissioner Van Duiker.
Here.
Vice Chair Flowers.
Your presence.
Chair Sheeler.
Here.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Consent calendar approval of minutes for October 20th, 2020.
Commissioners, I presume you have reviewed the October 20th meeting, meeting minutes. Are there any comments or changes? Seeing that there are none, so I have a motion to accept.
I move that we accept the minutes of the last meeting.
Second, Vice Chair Flowers. Thank you. Commissioner Flowers. I'm sorry, Vice Chair Flowers.
No worries, I.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Nishimura.
I.
Commissioner Turner Mike.
Hi.
Commissioner Magnavowski.
Hi.
Commissioner Van Duiker.
Hi.
Chair Sheeler.
Hi.
Minutes passed, thank you.
Next item, please.
Under public comment, under Government Code Section 5494, I'm sorry, 549, 54.3, members of the audience may address the commission on any agenda item within the jurisdiction of the commission or on any agenda item. Those wishing to speak on non-agenda items will be called upon at the beginning of the meeting. Those wishing to speak for or against an agenda item will be called upon after the presentation by the city planning department for the, that agenda item.
We don't have any in the planning inbox, Stacy, at this time.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Public hearing, item 4A, Sunrise Boulevard Animal Hospital, 7484 Sunrise Boulevard. The applicant is requesting to modify an existing use permit and design review permit to allow a 670 square foot addition to the existing animal hospital. The space will provide a designated area for pets following procedures. The new recovery room will be loaded, located to the north rear of the built, excuse me, located towards the rear of the building along the north side. The adjacent new recovery room will have two small exercise yards and be used to walk exercise pets during their recovery. The project qualifies for exemption from California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, under Section 15301, Class 1 infill projects, and Casey Kempfner is going to present this project tonight.
Excuse me, Chair Sheeler, I am going to recuse myself from this item because the applicant is a customer of ours. So I will mute and stop video.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, and Commission, forgive me, Allison, this is her project. She came down with a bug, so she's not able to join us tonight. So I'll try to make sure I get all those details, but we'll go through it here slowly. So Stacy mentioned this is a small expansion of an existing animal hospital on Sunrise Boulevard. Make mouse torque here. Can everyone see my screen, okay? Yes, okay. This animal hospital has been operating since 1971, and they've been focused on care for dogs and cats. They came in, you know, they were operating as, under the county, and then they came in for a use permit when the county reads on the property. And then later on, there was another use permit. So now they're adding on space and they're amending their use permit to allow the addition of that space. They're also getting a designer permit, permit for the aesthetics of that building expansion. So the reasoning for this change is that they, they found with COVID, they have customers drop off the animals and then they need a place to store the animals because the customer is not, no longer holding them. So that they envision that this is going to continue in the future, so they need a little bit more space for animals that are being held while they're doing their procedures. So as you can see here, 7484 Sunrise Boulevard, existing hospital is shown on the right. In the circle shows the small addition. Currently, it's a fenced area, and so they would just be adding on a small portion to, to the existing building to contain animals that they're waiting to be seen. On the site plan, you can see here, it's just kind of filling in this smaller area. They will also have a fenced area for walking animals. They do not operate as a kennel. It's, they're supervised animals at all times and only when there are someone present. So again, the, the new kennel space will be used for the keeping of dogs following a procedure. No ones, no animals are boarded or kept onsite overnight. The expansion, you know, it looks in kind with what was approved or what's there now, so it looks like a nice addition. And the project meets all the standards of the zoning code and staff's opinion. So the motions are here for you. I know the applicant's here as, as well. I'm happy to answer any questions. I did email out amended resolution with a couple more wherethes that were added for your consideration. So when we do get a motion, if the first motion could be as amended, that would be much appreciated, and we'll get that incorporated into the record. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good, Casey. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff?
Yeah, a question. I'm just wondering, just because of the new space for the outside, I wonder if any neighbors thought that was a concern for like noise or dogs are barking or cats, you know, get on the loose or whatnot. Were there, was there anyone that came forth and, and had a comment about this?
I, I believe some folks had some questions about it, but once they were, were told what the nature of that space was and that the dogs were not going to be kept out there long term, it's, it's more of an exercise with supervision. They didn't no longer had the concerns, but we did, I believe Allison did hear from a couple nearby folks. Awesome, thank you.
No more questions. Hearing none and seeing none, I would like to open the public hearing. And I understand the project proponent is here. Do they have anything they wish to speak to? My name is Bikram Basra. I'm the owner of the project.
So we don't have any question at this point or any comments.
All right, thank you. Casey, do we have anyone else that wishes to speak on this?
I have no raised hands.
Yeah, and there's nothing in the inbox either. I'm sorry, my mute button got stuck there for a moment.
Thank you.
Is that kind of a night? Okay, thank you.
Chair Sheeler, I actually do have a question on this.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Casey, maybe you can explain, this seems like a pretty cut and dry situation and a rather small addition to the building. Is there a particular reason why this is, this particular one has come before the planning commission?
Yeah, with the use permit, you're capped at a certain threshold. Whether in a movie theater, it's the number of seats, in this case, it's the score footage for the veterinary use. So if you are expanding it by any means, that requires an amendment and all use permit amendments and citrus sites go to the commission for consideration.
Okay, because of the size?
Because, yeah, in increasing the, the size of the use, correct?
Of the use, okay, all right. It's just a, okay, very good. That was my only question, thank you.
Thank you. With no more questions, I presume, but I would like to make a motion.
I'll be happy to make a motion that we adopt. Let's see, Casey wanted us to make a, an emotion as amended and adopt the amended resolution number 22-01, finding that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA for Section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act, exemption class one.
I second Turner Mike.
Who's called the roll?
Vice Chair Flowers.
Hi.
Commissioner Engel.
Hi.
Commissioner Nishimura.
Hi.
Commissioner Turner Mike.
Hi.
Commissioner Magnavowski.
Hi.
Commissioner Van Duiker has recused himself. Chair Sheeler, please.
Bye.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much, guys. Any determination by the planning commission, may you appeal?
There's two more motions.
My apologies.
That's okay. I move to approve the use permit modification for the Sunrise Boulevard Animal Hospital located at 7484 Sunrise Boulevard, subject to the findings contained in the staff report and the conditions of approval provided in Exhibit A.
I second Turner Mike.
Call the roll, please.
Vice Chair Flowers.
Hi.
Commissioner Engel.
Hi.
Commissioner Nishimura.
Hi.
Commissioner Turner Mike.
Hi.
Commissioner Magnavowski.
Hi.
Van Duiker has recused himself and Chair Sheeler.
Hi.
Motion passed, thank you. And certainly as amended, I approve, all right, I move that we approve the design review permit modification for Sunrise Boulevard Animal Hospital located at 7484 Sunrise Boulevard, subject to the findings contained in the staff report and the conditions of approval provided as Exhibit A.
I second Turner Mike.
Roll, please.
Vice Chair Flowers.
Hi.
Commissioner Engel.
Hi.
Commissioner Nishimura.
Hi.
Commissioner Turner Mike.
Hi.
Commissioner Magnavowski.
Hi.
Van Duiker has recused himself and Chair Sheeler.
Hi.
Motion passed, thank you.
Next item, please.
If you can read the verbiage, please.
Any determination by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council by filing a written notice of appeal and the appropriate filing fees of $250 with the city clerk not later than 10 calendar days after the date on which the determination is made. Next item, please.
Item 4B, Citrus Heights zoning code update. Project description, the planning commission will review a variety of updates to the city zoning code and forward recommendation to the city council. The project includes revisions to sections pertaining to fencing, parking, landscaping, tree mitigation, and a very, and variety of other amendments. The complete list of changes can be obtained from the planning division. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA under Section 15061B3 of the guidelines. Project Planner Eric Singer.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. So Stacy said we're going to be just reviewing some of the proposed zoning code amendments. To the, you know, changes and the, the opinions and the voices of the citizens of Citrus Heights. And so this document is amended usually at least a couple of times a year to incorporate changes that reflect, you know, things that we have found to be incongruous or potential issues that may be arising or just to clarify some current text. So some major changes that I'm going to be discussing.
Eric, you're breaking up a little bit.
Sorry, can, can everybody hear me? Okay.
Maybe try it again.
Let me apologize.
That's better.
Does that, does that work better?
Yes.
Okay. Some of the changes that we will be discussing in a bit more detail have to do with the following. Commercial fencing, residential parking, tree protection and mitigation, use permits. And just as a reminder, this body will be reviewing the changes and then forwarding a recommendation of action to the city council for the final resolution that will incorporate these changes. So first off, discussing changes to the commercial fencing, specifically to the census section of the zoning code.
You're kind of breaking up again.
Let me do this. I apologize. Everybody hear me okay? Okay, sorry about that. Your comments didn't work so well. So currently fences and walls have two triggers for when a staff level design review is required. The first is if the proposed fencer wall is visible from the public right of way and it has a height of greater than six feet and a length greater than 100 feet. The second trigger is if the length of the fence The second trigger is if the length of the fence is two hundred feet or more, and that's just regardless of height. So we have received a number of inquiries. The planning staff has received a number of inquiries over the past few years regarding proposed fencing along many commercial corridors like Auburn Boulevard, Greenback, Sunrise. On occasion, some of the proposed projects fell below the requirements for design review. So either they didn't meet that six foot tall, hundred foot long or two hundred foot long threshold, and they were allowed to be constructed without any kind of staff review or approval. As you all know, fences and walls have a very significant visual, you know, impact on a site. And especially when we're talking about commercial corridors that are really the gateways into the city. So after reviewing some zoning codes from surrounding jurisdictions, also looking at our own previous planning documents like the Auburn Boulevard specific plan, staff is proposing that we make some of the following changes to the zoning code just specifically as it pertains to fences in commercial zones. One, we require design review for all fences proposed within a commercial zone. So that's land zoned commercially and also visible from a public right of way. Two, eliminating the six foot length, or excuse me, six foot height and hundred foot length requirement. Instead, just saying that design review is required for any fence over eight feet tall and or visible from a public right of way. And then essentially creating kind of a set of objective design review criteria for commercial fencing. And this is language that has also been used in our Auburn Boulevard specific plan. So we are drawing from, again, objective design criteria that has been approved in previous iterations. One, talking about that maximum height of eight feet. We would allow for any fence that's outside of the public right of way to forego this design review requirement. However, if it's visible from a public right of way and it's in a commercial zone, you're limited to eight feet in height. Fences and walls essentially should be treated as an architectural extension of the building itself. It should incorporate visual features and visual interest that allows it to harmoniously work in concert with the site as opposed to sticking out like a sore thumb. You know, things like pilasters along a wall, for example, can create visual relief and interest. And then, you know, a kind of part and parcel with that idea is when, especially when fronting a pedestrian route, fences and walls should be set back at least three feet to allow for a landscaping strip between that public walk and the proposed fence or wall. Along those lines, talking about landscaping, you can incorporate things like clinging ivy or, you know, flowering vines that can go along a wall or a fence. You know, things where the landscape can also be incorporated into the design of the fence itself that would work in concert again with the site and to help, you know, kind of beautify the environment in total. So moving on, talking about residential parking, this is a topic, you know, under which we get a good number of inquiries every year, specifically regarding paving of front yards. Currently, the zoning code doesn't really specify the amount of total lot area on a residential property that has to remain pervious. And by pervious, we're talking about a surface that allows for the infiltration of water, so into the soil. Now, staff is proposing in conjunction with the changes to this section, we actually created a definition for pervious, so it's clearly understood what that means. But essentially, the changes that we're proposing here would state that at least a minimum of twenty-five percent of the total lot area of a residential property has to remain an impervious surface. The way that the zoning code is written currently, it basically doesn't, it doesn't specify that the total front yard area has to remain in an impervious state. What it states is that no more than fifty percent of the length of a lot frontage can be paved or can be impervious. It's a little, it's a little murky, so we tried to clarify that a little bit. And the the changes that we're we're proposing are to state that no more than forty percent of the front yard area, so the total front yard area, that's any part of the property in front of the house. We're not talking about the setback, but just if you're looking at it on the map, the front of the house, wherever that driveway is, extend that out the length of the of the frontage. No more than forty percent of that should be an impervious surface. And that's talking sidewalks, driveway, parking surfaces, et cetera. Now, we would allow for deviations from these standards with a staff level designer review permit. Specifically, in this case, we're thinking of things like small lot subdivisions where the, you know, the lot size would not meet those requisite standards and also allow for enough building to be built on the property. So we understand that there are situations in which this this may need to be, you know, reviewed by staff and potentially circumvented. So the next section that we are proposing some more significant changes to are addressed to tree protection and mitigation. Currently, you know, as we've discussed in in meetings recently, zoning code allows for mitigation to be achieved via either an inch for inch replacement of the trees that are removed from the site or, you know, payment of two hundred ninety-eight dollars per inch into a tree mitigation fund. Currently, there's no requirement or incentive for a developer to retain existing trees that are below that minimum size to be considered protected, right below that six inch threshold. And we looked at this and we've looked at some other zoning codes in the area and we've thought about how it it has become kind of a hot button issue recently of trying to preserve as many trees on a site and making sure that the developer is not removing trees unnecessarily. So in order to offer that additional incentive to preserve those, you know, additional existing trees, we're recommending that we allow onsite preservation of native oak trees under six inches in diameter within the buildable area of the property to be counted towards the mitigation for the removed trees. So an example of this would be you have a four inch value oak, which would normally not be protected and therefore not need to be mitigated. That four inch value oak is on the buildable area of the site, but there is the potential for the site plan to be reworked a bit to accommodate that tree and not have to remove it. That would actually count as four inches towards the mitigation for any other trees removed on the site. This standard, like I mentioned, is in place currently in Sacramento County, for example. Oh, and I apologize. The additional issue that we wanted to address here is the modification of language about tree mitigation exemptions. Now, this is a bit more complicated than it necessarily needs to be, but it's because the language within the zoning code is slightly complicated. So I I have tried to parse it down to its its base elements. And if you'll bear with me for a second, I will actually be sharing a different screen here to show you what I'm talking about. So first off, we have an exemption within our tree mitigation and tree permitting section of the zoning code that talks about when a property is exempt from having to get a tree permit. One of those exemptions is the lot is under ten thousand square feet in size. That's a hard and fast rule, very clearly understood. There's additional language within the zoning code that says essentially if the lot is too small to be subdivided per the underlying zoning designation of the property, then it is also considered exempt from having to get a tree permit. Now, an example of this would be, okay, you have a property that's less than forty thousand square feet in size and it's zoned RD two. When a property is zoned RD two, that means that it needs to have at least a twenty foot thousand, twenty thousand square foot sized parcel in any, you know, parcel map split. So if you have a parcel of over forty thousand square feet, you can create two parcels of twenty thousand square feet. If you have an undersized parcel or anything under forty thousand, this property would then be exempt from having to get a tree permit to remove trees on site. And this could potentially lead to a situation in which a developer has the ability to essentially take all the trees out of their site without any mitigation whatsoever for their removal. So I was trying to find an example of this within the city. And the one I came across is this particular property. As you can see, it's zoned RD two, which means it would have to have a minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet to split. It's only thirty thou, excuse me, thirty-four thousand square feet, so you couldn't split it. But per the the current zoning code, it would basically allow for the rule of every single one of these trees on the site without any mitigation whatsoever for their removal. The current provision as it stands, I don't know if it's ever been utilized and and I'm sure Casey can speak to that. If if we have ever had to utilize that, but my understanding is it's seldom used. It's somewhat clumsily worded and just kind of overly complicated. So for the sake of clarity and for the sake of of, you know, making sure that we're preserving as many trees as possible within the city, staff is recommending that we remove that language from that section.
Now, I'll just add, you did receive a couple of emails about this particular provision. So those were provided to the commission. But Eric's right, and I I've been here for fifteen years now. I think the number of times I've used that exemption, I could count on one hand. So it's fairly infrequently that it's used. It is confusing. And also, in situations like this, some of the emails got a, you know, the ability to to put housing there in situations like like this. Generally, these lots are on the bigger side, so there's more wiggle room to to fit in some sort of housing development like an ADU than than most of the city where we have these smaller lots and it's a little bit more difficult. So so for the reasons Eric described and and these additional reasons I described, we think it's a good fit for for the community.
And one of the other things to keep in mind as well is that the new provision allowing for preservation of trees under six inches on the site would count toward any mitigation required for the removal of a tree that might be in the way of building an ADU. So we're hoping that that would also help to accommodate any, you know, potential issues that may arise from from that particular case. So going back to the additional sections, there's just one more kind of major section that we are proposing changes to. Currently, a public hearing has to be held to revoke a use permit on a property, even if that use permit has been, you know, or that use has not been occurring on the site for a decade, fifteen, twenty years, however long. So essentially what we're what we're proposing here to hopefully eliminate any duplicative processes and kind of streamline, you know, efficiency. We are proposing this language, if a use is discontinued for more than twelve months, the use permit shall expire as long as the following criteria have been met. One, no appurtenant structure is required and the use has been discontinued for twelve months. And by an appurtenant structure, we're talking about a structure that's essential for the functioning of that use permit. So a gas station, a gas pump, a drive-through service, you've got your drive-through, you know, your drive-up menu board, your your drive-through lanes. There's just a couple of examples off the top of my head. I'm sure if you kind of go through the list, you can think of a few. But essentially, any any structure or accessory building or anything on that site that's absolutely essential to the functioning of that use permit. If there's none of that on the site and the use discontinues for twelve months, we recommend that that use permit expire. Now, if there isn't a pertinent structure on the site, but it's removed for more than twelve months and the use is discontinued for more than twelve months, that would also qualify as the use permit expiring. So there are a few other, obviously, minor amendments, as you saw within the staff report, things like allowing slightly greater signage allowances for a non-residential use within a residential zone. There is criteria that we're having to add for installation of emergency generators at wireless telecommunications facilities. This is to be just in compliance with federal statutes and adding new definitions into the zoning code for things like artisan and craft product manufacturing. Like I mentioned before, specifically designing, defining what a pervious surface is and further kind of helping to define base station macrocell tower sites. Just again, things to keep in pace with the rapidly changing technology that we're seeing from a lot of wireless telecommunications facilities. So I am happy to answer any questions that the commissioners have on any of these topics. And as I mentioned, these are the recommended motions. Again, we're not recommending any type of resolution. It's just recommendations to the city council on these these changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question. Regarding the parking design, how's that going to affect SB nine?
Well, my understanding of SB nine is that, I mean, is is there a specific way in which you, so are you saying like would this would this affect the proposal to split a lot if we're saying that if they split it, then they're creating a situation in which there's more impervious service than would otherwise be allowed?
Yeah, I guess it does it give the city a little bit more leeway in how we split lots?
My understanding is this would not supersede SB nine. One of the things that we've, like I mentioned, incorporated into the language of it is to say that deviations from the standards are allowed with a staff level designer review permit. Now, things like a small lot subdivision or a small lot housing development, those things are kind of already occurring and are exempt from these particular rules because we understand certain sites are constrained. My understanding of SB nine is basically that there has to be a concrete reason like a lack of services and inability to create access to the site, something where the chief building official basically states by splitting this lot, you are potentially endangering the health, safety, welfare of the community. It's a very, very high bar to clear to deny an SB nine application. And of course, this is our preliminary understanding of it, so it is, it is evolving, but my instinct would be to say that this would not necessarily preclude an SB nine split because we've included the language about exemptions being allowed.
Mr. Singer, I might be able to add some clarification to that if I may. Yeah, so so state laws, particularly SB nine, has has a list of criteria that requires the city to approve certain projects and applications that meet certain standards. And if those certain standards are met, a local ordinance of this type would not be able to preclude approval of that project. So I I believe that that just gives some further support to what Mr. Singer just said.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. We're talking about regular single family lots, correct?
Yes.
Um, I wrote down my questions because I have a few. I wasn't really clear. I think I like the twenty-five percent, you know, for certain. The the limit of the forty percent, no more than forty percent. I I walked around my neighborhood and I drove around Citrus Heights. And if I'm understanding that, that means as much of your front yard as you can use for paved parking, including sidewalks, except is forty percent of that, correct?
Correct.
I want to make sure I understand that because I walked around my neighborhood, for example, and there are tons of properties that for certain have used more than forty percent for a driveway. And what they have done is lovely. What some of the problems they have alleviated. First off, they now have a smaller space. We're on fairly decent sized frontage lots. They have a smaller space to landscape and so therefore landscape design has just gone up. It's it's much more beautiful than it was when we all had big lawns, right? Another thing that it has alleviated, and so that was a plus. Another thing that I've seen that has been alleviated are is street parking of cars. Because now a two-car garage can have a third, the drive can go to the next Hou- Holmes driveway. And now it's really, it's cut your front yard. But that car is off the street, right? So in in at least my particular neighborhood, I love that many of them are at least fifty percent, probably even, I've got a couple of examples that I just took pictures of and stuff that are up to seventy percent, right? And then another problem I have with this saying no more than forty percent, you're saying impervious, so you're not really saying gravel, right?
So actually gravel is included as an impervious surface. You know, it it's it's any surface, so within the the definition of pervious surface that we we stated, it's any surface that's preventing the infiltration of water into the substrate and
Well, I I appreciate that because what it was telling me if it wasn't is that now instead of people pulling out their gravel and putting a beautiful driveway, they got to keep it gravel, but that's not the case. That's good. Another issue I had is, you know, if we are in fact in a drought or we anticipate more droughts, you're you're asking us to not cut down the amount The amount of water that we are using. You know, to water our front yards because you want them. Covered with something. And I mean, of course, we could all go desert and that's fine, but. But um, that was another issue I had. There was one, there were a couple more. I just wanted to just put it out there. I didn't know by reading this if. If a resident. Say they want to make their drive more than forty percent. Their parking for an RV and their two cars. Um, the design review permit. That, does that come at a cost to them coming before the planning commission and asking for, that's a permit? And as we know, citrus sites permits are pretty expensive.
So a. Uh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, that was that was my question about that.
So a staff level designer review permit wouldn't necessarily be a a public hearing by any means. Um, and flat work, you know, quote-unquote, flat work, paving a driveway actually doesn't require a building permit in California. Um, so we wouldn't necessarily. Have the ability on every single individual, single-family lot. To say. You have to apply for a designer review permit if you want an exemption from this. When we include that language, that's more speaking of. Kind of a larger scale development, like I mentioned, a small lot subdivision or something where we're looking at the entire site. And we understand there are restrictions to the available. Space uh where they can build a home, how much landscaping area they have, how much impervious surface area they'd be allowed. Um, so that's why this specific language is included. Most of the time, truth be told. We will receive complaints about uh a resident having paved more than their allowed area. Um, and that's that's how we're able to react and. The number of inquiries as well as complaints about people that have, you know. Paved additional driveway, maybe where they shouldn't have, or um, you know, somebody is upset that their neighbor is uh. Installing a a drive aisle for their RV right next to their home and it's in a disallowed area. Um, these are kind of just some of the 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 impetus for, you know, implementing these changes. That forty percent number is not completely arbitrary. Um, obviously, we are looking at other jurisdictions in the area. Regis Cordova, Elk Grove, um, I believe um were a couple of the examples of where this language was was used. And essentially what we're trying to get at is just establishing baselines for, okay. We understand that the front yard area of a home has a a decent amount of both impervious and impervious in most single-family lots. That limit may have already been met. But. They're already capped by the language that talks about no more than fifty percent of the lot frontage may be impervious. And that means. Essentially. You're talking about, you know, curb cuts. Uh, if you've got a small frontage. That's maybe only fifty feet wide. Well, no more than twenty-five feet of that could be a curb cut to allow for the driveway. And twenty-five feet right there is, you know, barely allowing for two cars to get into that driveway. So. Um. It's.
But what you're doing is you're you're reducing that by ten percent and it, right?
I apologize. This this may be a little unclear. Um, we are not removing that fifty percent lot frontage provision. This is more talking about the total area of that front yard. Um, because there are. Many occasions where you have a a property that has a front yard area. Where. The frontage, and we're just talking about where that. Impervious surface meets the street, essentially what we would call a curb cut. Um, maybe in excess of what the actual allowable. Driveway area could be. So preventing a driveway from going right up in front of a home. Um. Preventing it from going on the opposite side of the property. One of the questions we get a lot from. Or complaints we get a lot from residents is saying that, you know, somebody has installed. Um, an RV driveway right next to my home and it's opposite of their driveway and. Seems like they're exceeding the allowable driveway area of their property. So um. We're we're trying to respond kind of in in real time to a lot of these things, but.
I have one other question about that because I was also looking at like some properties that are on, say, for example, Kenneth. Um, as I go down Kenneth. And that's not a good example because it's so wide, somebody could get out. But so for properties who are on kind of main streets. And if the only way. If you've got to have such a small. Driveway. That you can only go in and back out onto the main street, you know, a lot of those kind of properties, especially some of the older ones in Orangeville at least. Have made themselves that L cut. So they can pull in back, you know, do their three-point turn and get out going frontwards, being safe. And it seems like this on some of those kind of small lots would would limit people as well. Because they're going to be covering up more than forty percent of, you know, it's going to be more than forty percent. They just have a regular little sixties house with a little. Yard.
Hmm.
One car garage and they want to get out of the street safely, you know. So I don't know. I'm I'm not. Very satisfied with with the explanation, and I think you answered it. Is one of my questions was, I was very curious. Um, why? This forty percent, other than the fact that other jurisdictions do it. That's really the only explanation I heard.
So I I think I can probably add a little bit of clarity to this. Um. We've had in the long, forever, we've had numerous provisions related to paving in in the front yard. Um, the one that Eric mentioned, fifty percent of the length of the frontage has always been around. We've also allowed circular driveways um. In instances to avoid people backing onto busy streets. So those have always kind of been in our code. Um, what we ran into in recent years is um people are. Paving the front yards essentially um up to their door and parking cars on it. Um, so our trailers, RVs, and and that is um led to a number of of problems and. You know, pretty soon there's no landscaping left. You have nothing but a house and and then um asphalt or or concrete. Um, and so that has led to a number of of concerns from neighbors um. Throughout the last several years. So this was an attempt to kind of minimize that. I think it's important to note that that forty percent is is area, so the the. Rectangle that of that front yard. Um, whereas the other standard that we already have in place is is the fifty percent lengthwise. So that is our. Tool to to kind of prevent. Wholesale paving of front yards where people are parking cars all over the place.
Doesn't your twenty-five percent kind of account for that though? Without?
So twenty, the twenty-five percent refers to the entire lot. So that could be instances where we've had. Where people pave their entire backyard and their entire front yard. So um, the twenty-five percent is the whole lot. The forty percent is just in front of the house.
Okay, I didn't understand that. Why couldn't you just put a minimum of twenty-five percent um in the front yard needs to be? Um. These are words. Pervious. Yeah. So why couldn't you just say at least twenty-five percent? At least then you're giving people that option without making their whole front lot. Um. I don't know, the whole front yard. In some of these lots, that's a lot of grass. That's a lot of landscape that is not, to me, not very responsible. When there are options to really do beautiful landscape jobs. And get a car off the street. I think forty percent just is seems. To me, it's a little. Ridiculous, and I understand Eric um saying that, you know, it's kind of like it'd just be put in the code, but. You don't need a permit, so you people could still get away with it unless somebody complained. Well, that kind of puts homeowners in a in a bad. Place to even have to go there, you know, knowing that you come, you come. So there's a complaint. And now you're already on the losing side because you're trying to beautify your yard, your lot, and get some cars off the street. So I don't know. I don't like the forty percent at all.
Yeah, I I mean, I think that for us, that the. Beautification has been the exception and the parking as many cars as possible has been the rule. That's what we're trying to get ahead of.
Right, but don't you, I mean, there's also code for not parking. You shouldn't be parking your car cars on your grass, right? So now you're telling people you can't put in a. Extra parking, so you're just going to have them pulling up on yards and you're going to look like you're in. A different city. I guess.
Yeah, I mean. Uh.
Anyway, that's that's all I had to say about it. I think think was was a little the ill problem with people on a busy street. The. The water issues we have. And. The ability to make your yard. Your landscape dollars go further on a smaller piece of of. Pervious lot.
And commissioner Engel, um, I I think to add to that, I. I do like less of a lot or less of parking. I think adding a lot of concrete is uh um. It doesn't beautify the place, but I do, I I'm a proponent and to like ADUs, right? And uh, when you build an ADU, you need that additional parking space and you don't want to take up the street coverage.
Yeah.
Um. So in that case, I I definitely do agree that, you know, adding another driveway or adding another parking spot. Um, aside from the street, um. In this case would. I think would be acceptable. But then again, I guess. Um. I guess the citizens should understand that, hey, like they got to go through a design review permit in order to get that. I guess approved by the city. Um, before doing it.
I'm I'm not seeing, if I may interject, I'm Casey, I'm not hearing you say that. Um, there's not a uh an in a possible deviation from this, right? If the if the homeowner felt it was in the best interest and there was an ADU and needed that third parking lot, that there would be. Consideration as long as they uh it went before the staff, right? So I, you know, I think you're just giving some guidelines here to work within uh so that if you do have that occasion where a neighbor's. Uh, decided to pave their whole darn yard that you're able to uh, you know, uh, control that a little bit. And yet, um, there obviously could be some some changes or exceptions made uh if they. Present good cause for doing so. So that's what I'm I'm reading this as. So I'm not, I'm not seeing an absolute. Cannot exceed that forty percent. I'm I'm seeing the deviation on the third, the third point. Um, that you guys will make some concessions if necessary and and you can, so.
That's correct.
How much does the cost for a designer review permit?
We typically, for something of this nature, do not charge. It's it's just more of a file to keep track of these sort of things.
Got it. Makes sense.
Right, my understanding was if it were an ADU, they wouldn't. They would get to bypass this anyhow. Um.
Yeah, ADU, ADUs don't require parking spaces, but um Commissioner Markowski is right, um, they are desirable. Um, so it's it's kind of a trying to balance the amount of paving versus, you know, um, desirability. Um, so I think.
I.
You know, we have some tools in our toolbox now that we can help um ensure we're not paving the whole front yards.
Casey, I had a question regarding the tree. Uh. Protection mitigation. So that was a little bit confusing on. Um, what you're proposing here. And I guess what I didn't, I wasn't really clear about is that um. We want to include the smaller trees. Within a bit of buildable area. Uh, and include those as part of the tree mitigation requirement. I I was a, I'm I'm. A little confused as how this reads and how this would either benefit or not benefit um a potential builder.
Sure. So um, right now, if you have a lot and you have a handful of trees that are under six inches. Um, you get a, you get a free pass if you take those out and there's no mitigation. Um. And if you have a larger tree and you do take it out, there's mitigation, but you can either um plant new trees if you want, and this could be seedlings. Um, so what this does allows is uh instead of planting new seedlings, you get credit for protecting these. Six inches or less trees. And preserving them as opposed to just yanking them out for the heck of it.
Got it. Okay.
Because those are generally more established and they're already healthy and. You know, it's it's better overall because they're they're already more mature. They're headed to the game.
Okay, so that would play into uh. Presuming that they have to remove some other type of tree, it would, it would, okay, got it, which might uh set to give them a credit for what's already existed. Got it.
Correct.
That's clear. Thank you.
I did have one tree question too, um, regarding Eric's um example. Just what would that particular, given the example that you put up? What would that person do if they wanted to remove any of those trees? Were they just out, totally out of luck?
No, so as the as the um.
The deep lot.
Code is currently worded, they actually don't have to get a trade permit at all for removing.
Oh, they didn't at thirty-five thousand square feet? They didn't need one?
At, so if they were uh above forty thousand square feet for the size of their lot, they would have been required to. Because they're. It's basically that their zoning matches the size of their property.
Um, okay.
But in this case, because it doesn't. They wouldn't have to get a a tree permit as it's as it's current word.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hi, Eric, I do have a question about the fencing. Sorry, last bullet under design criteria. Uh, it says the the fences and walls should. Be set back. That implies to me that there are some. That's that is the desire, but it's not the absolute.
That is correct. We. When we are creating objective design criteria. Um. We have to accommodate for the fact that no two sites are exactly alike. And that in. Certain cases, there just may not be enough space to create that landscaping strip. But we. We feel that every good faith effort should be made, and the language of the zoning code. Should reflect um that it. It can't always be a hard and fast rule with these design criteria. It's just that best faith efforts should be made to achieve these design standards. So it's it's the same language that's um reflected. I keep going back to it, but the Auburn Boulevard specific plan. Um, you know, specific plans are kind of bigger ten-thousand-foot overarching documents. You're you're trying to design. What a whole swath of area might look like, and in doing so, you have to use language that's fairly broad. Um. Because again, certain parts of the city may be. Very different um from other parts of the city and what those dimensions would allow. Um, and so as this is just again, you know, the zoning code is a is another ten-thousand-foot document that has to accommodate a very broad. Swath of all different types of property types. And so. That's that's why we we choose softer language essentially.
Very good. Thank you.
Hmm, of course.
Want to give us the recommendations again, Eric?
Here, I recommend we open the public hearing and. Although I don't see anyone raising their hand or in the um email box other than the two emails that were provided to the commission earlier this evening.
Yeah, I don't have any raised hands either.
So um, i- if I could say a few things, I'm sure. Um, regarding the tree mitigation. Um. I uh, like I said, I'm a I'm a proponent of ADUs. I love ADUs. And I love the fact that Citrus Sites has a program that gives ADU plans and engineered, you know, blueprints and whatnot um. That offer the service to to Citrus Sites residents. And I think a lot of lots. Are capable of adding ADUs and, I mean, California needs needs those homes. And what not better way to do that is to bring them to Citrus Sites, you know, and and bring the residents. Um, so that being said, um, I have an example of uh. Of the tree permit language, the exemption that we used in in our ADU build a few years ago. Um, we're zoned RD five here um on on Rush Drive. And our lot was a little over ten thousand square foot. So. Um, in order to build the ADU, we have to get rid of this, you know, beautiful oak tree. And it was, it was super wide. It was going to cost around like sixty, seven thousand to remove it. Um, mitigation fees. Um, but just because the other exemption was there. So in other words, this lot was no longer splittable, so we were able to actually cut it down and build the ADU and the project was feasible. Um, otherwise, I mean, when you're building something so small, um, in our case, it was a larger ADU, but in most cases, you're building a smaller ADU, some hundred, eight hundred square foot. And if the cost to remove a tree is like five to ten percent of the ADU project, that's a lot of money. Um, and it's it's no longer feasible for um residents to actually put up ADUs. Um. And uh, so um, to be fully transparent, um, I did talk to um a few of my builders or a few builders that I know. Um. Uh, we build and we have a few uh people that build and we work a lot with with builders with with my wife's company. And. Um, I called up a few of them and I um I asked them about this, you know. About this topic. What do you guys think about this new zoning language? Um, they weren't pleased with it, um, especially. A company that I contacted was just strictly ADU um driven business, right? They said. It's very difficult for people to come up with money, um, especially like, you know. Joes like us, you know, who want to put up an AD in the back to either, you know, have a pool house or to bring in their family members, like their parents, older parents that they need to take care of or. Uh, whatever the case is. Take care of or uh whatever the case is, you know. It would it would be much more challenging to find funding if. You know, all of a sudden now you have to spend much more money on mitigation fees. So those comments actually came from a few people that I spoke to, um just to be fully transparent and. Kind of what Eric mentioned, you know, he he had the the whole layout of, you know, thirty thousand, you know, square foot lot that was that was there. And imagine putting an ADU on it, um with that many trees, no matter where you move, where you shift the ADU. Still are gonna come up with with tree problems and in order to put an ADU. Like you'll still have to um pay in the mitigation program. So what I'm proposing is. Keep the verbiage as is. Just in order to have additional building structures, just in order to have more residents in Citrus Heights. And just for our ADU program to, you know, proceed. As, you know, as I think intended. So just it just a. Your comments there.
I guess I'm not completely clear, Paul. Until you want to keep the language.
Yeah, so the so the code, the zoning code um change would would essentially remove the exemption. Where if your lot is no longer splitable, you would. You know, you would not have to, you you don't need to get a tree permit. So so in other words, what I'm saying is keep that exemption. As it is now. Because with the new zoning code, the exemption would essentially disappear and then you would only have that, you know, only if you're under ten thousand square foot. Lot, then you would basically qualify for, you know, not having a tree permit.
So I think uh maybe to to help. Clarify what what uh. Commissioner Mc- Mc- McNavaski is asking is um I I apologize, let me pull up the section of the zoning code where the language is is here. This is the specific language. Of the zoning code and the change that's proposed is um. Removing this this last uh part of the sentence. Uh or that cannot be further subdivided based on the minimum lot area requirements of the applicable residential zone. So. The the change would be to to keep that that language in place.
Thank you Eric. But of course, it does come up with those problems where um I did have a conversation with um with the director Casey and he did say, you know, at. Any points on what the huge lot, they can just cut down trees. Um so there is that give and take, it's it's either, you know. I guess allow it or not, or or possibly make a make a change where. You know. You can remove the trees if there is gun going to be a structure on it and then you need these two criteria or or whatnot, but. Something that gives a more flexibility to the homeowner if they want to build an ADU, ADU. That they can remove the trees without mitigating. Otherwise, the project would would be very expensive.
So is it my understanding that um the ADU special provisions do not apply to this? Section to the tree section?
No, the ADUs would still uh have to adhere with this section. Any construction.
And what what is our main purpose for removing that piece?
There's a couple of reasons, um it does cause confusion, if confusion, the um. We don't use it, as I said, we've probably used it half dozen times since I've been here. Not too frequent that we use it and then the bigger concern is the ability for folks to, uh the fall in this criteria could. Clearcut their property without any repercussions, whether they're bea- beautiful oak trees or or not and. We'd have no provisions enabled to protect those trees and. You know, having heard people crying on the phone that their neighbors cutting down a tree, um you know, I can relate to to those situations as well, so. Um it's one of those tough things where we're trying to balance, you know, in this case, tree preservation and housing. Housing construction. Um as I said earlier, I think that um in most cases, these lots that are. This provision would apply to are generally larger, so there's generally more wiggle room to fit an ADU on there. Um we have a lot of different types of. ADUs that are allowed, they could be attached, they could be junior, they could be detached. I think there's a lot of flexibility to work around footprint of trees. Um so I think that that flexibility outweighs the the potential for people to be clearcutting their lots without any permit requirement.
And there's no way to just add ADU language in this, number one? And, you know. With the exception of if an ADU is going on the project. To to give us our housing, you know, our housing element, allow the person to do that and just throw that as an exception, even if you have. You do remove the um. Inability to be subdivided piece?
Um I think we'd have to think about a little bit. Um as I've said, I know, I know. McNavasky has had this exact situation come up for a project he worked on, but that's the only one I can think of where that an ADU. Um benefited from that, you know, it's pretty rare, so. I'd hate to make a carve out just for these rare occasions, but um if that's the flay pleasure of the commission, we can certainly. Come back with something on that.
If we're if we're trying to promote ADUs, I mean, it might be something to, you know, consider looking into at least and figuring out how. How that can be built in.
Yeah, I would definitely love that. I'm sure the builders I spoke to would would be happy.
Makes sense.
If um. If we kept this language and someone and and the situation arose where they want, someone wanted to put an ADU. Casey, is there is a, is there a process to appeal? This language to allow that ADU that so and I would I would picture a. That they would cut only the necessary trees to allow that ADU to go in.
Well, I think it's important, I mean, that's the process now is you can remove that tree, you just have to mitigate it. I mean, that's that's the rule is, you know, either you design around trees or if you are gonna kill them, you are responsible for replacing them. Um so that's that's the rule now. Um I don't. You know, there's not really an appeal process, you know, we we do require folks to, if they're gonna do work in the footprint of tree, they have to. Uh have an arborist take a look at it, classify the type of tree and species and the the condition. If the tree's in bad condition, there's no mitigation required. But if the tree's healthy, um and it's really the only place to put an ADU, then then they can get a permit to remove it. They're just obligated to to replace, they can do it by planting trees, they do not have to pay. Pay for it, um so that's another option. But the the in lieu fee is is two hundred ninety-eight dollars an inch, so it it is a. Not a cheap fee, um and we definitely encourage people to plant trees as opposed to paying into that pot of mine.
Yeah, something to add, I mean, our central size is pretty mature, right? So most homes are are older and trees are bigger. So it only becomes more. Prohibitive to to mitigate, you know, regardless of planting or, you know, paying the fees, they're they're high costs. Because replanting, I mean, it's it's almost as as high cost as as mitigating. Uh or paying the fees.
Why?
Because, I mean, Casey can probably explain that, but um so let's say you're replacing a twenty-six inch truck um of 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 a tree, right? So um instead of planting one tree that can grow up to twenty-six inches, now you gotta buy twenty-six of one inch oak trees, you know, or. You know, thirteen of two inch trees. And now, like, if you don't have a space to begin with, like, that would be pretty. Difficult. And I know like ten thousand square foot seems like a lot of space, we have a little over ten thousand, it's not a lot of space. I do imagine if you're, yeah, you're living on thirty thousand, maybe you can plant thirteen two inch oaks. First of all, you gotta pay for those oaks, second of all, you gotta plant them, um drop them, you know, or whatever you gotta do to these oats, but. It, uh what I'm saying, it it becomes costly and it be, it becomes that these ADU projects would be like not feasible.
See that, I could see people thinking, okay, we're gonna do that and then running into exactly this problem for one thing, Citrus Heights is full of oak trees, you know.
Mature trees too, like huge, huge trees.
And, you know, especially in some of those smaller lots in Grand Oaks area, like you said, and really everywhere.
Small lots would still be exempt, so it would only be applicable to the larger lots that generally, again, have more flexibility in in placing. Uh ADUs outside.
Generally speaking, a larger lot should should have, yeah.
And that's what this provision generally applies to.
That, you just gotta cross your fingers, you're not ten thousand and twenty.
Yeah, cuz I mean, about. Two thirds of the city's lots are under six thousand, six thousand to five, five to six thousand. Square feet, so that's just full context there.
Yeah. Built after the sixties.
So, yeah, regardless, um hopefully commissioners, um if that's. If possible, remain to keep the language of that, uh what what it is now without the removal of the exemption, um that's kind of what. Would be nice.
What I would suggest um is if there's no other um. Um questions or 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 motions is is first, Chair, open the public hearing, close the public hearing and then um. Mr. McNavasky, if this is the direction you'd like to go, can can make a motion. To uh amend the code as stated or. Keep the code as as stated. And and then take a roll call, uh vote if you get a second motion.
Yes, I agree. Um I will open the public comment.
We have no public comments.
I have no raised hands.
And therefore I close the public comment. Commissioner McNavasky, would you like to make a motion relative to your desire to modify or recommend?
I would uh clarify that um motion one is only sequel related, so probably wouldn't want to amend that motion, you'd wanna look at motion number two.
Yeah, cool. I move um for motion one to recommend the city council, or or do I just go to motion two, Casey?
Let's start with one.
Okay, I move to recommend the city council adopt a resolution to find the proposed amendments are exempt from the California Environment Quality Act, CEQA. Under section one five zero six one B three of the CEQA guidelines.
Stacy, you there? Okay, sorry, I didn't see you.
My camera keeps moving, sorry, guys. Did we get a motion, I'm sorry?
Yes, motion one.
Thank you, and did we get a second? Thank you. Vice Chair Flowers. Commissioner Engel. Commissioner Nishimura.
Hi.
Commissioner Turner Mike.
Hi.
Commissioner McNavasky.
Hi.
Commissioner Van Duker.
Hi.
Chair Sheeler.
Hi.
Motion one pass, thank you.
So in this good instance, Commissioner Matt McNavasky, if you'd like to say um. As um discussed, removing section related to tree uh tree exemptions. I move the motion to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance amending chapter one oh six of city citrus sites municipal codes, zoning code section. With the exemption or with the keeping the same verbiage for. Tree preservation, uh tree exemption language shown in. And exhibit A with the modifications.
Commissioners, do I have a second for the motion?
I'll second, turn to Mike.
Hold the roll, please.
Vice Chair Flowers. Vice Chair Flowers, are you there?
I am.
Okay. Can I get your vote, please?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Engel.
When to say no?
Commissioner Nishimura.
Aye.
Commissioner Turner Mike.
Hi.
Commissioner McNavasky.
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duker.
Aye.
Chair Sheeler.
Oh.
We have six, um I'm sorry, we have five ayes and two noes, motion pass.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Do I read the appeal language for this?
Casey, am I correct that there's no appeal language?
There's no appeal language, actually, cuz it's going to the council.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number uh five, regular calendar, we did have item uh five A. SB nine update from Allison, that is, that item is going to be continued to the next meeting. So we are going to move on to B and that is the election of Chair and Vice Chair.
Commissioners, do I have a motion for the position of Chair?
Yeah, um I move the motion um to for Vice Chair Flowers to be Chair.
A second, Van Duker.
Do I have any other nominations for Chair? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Chair Flowers.
Oh, in uh complete humility and gratitude, thank you all, aye.
Commissioner Engel.
Aye.
Commissioner Nishimura.
Aye.
Commissioner Turner Mike.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner McNavasky.
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duker.
Aye.
Chair Sheeler.
Oh, I guess so, aye.
Thank you. We now uh have Chair Flowers, thank you very much.
Do I have a nomination for Vice Chair?
We'd like to nominate Commissioner Van Duker.
A second.
Hold the roll, please.
Chair Flowers.
Aye.
Commissioner Engel.
Aye.
Commissioner Nishimura.
Aye.
Commissioner Turner Mike.
Aye.
Commissioner McNavasky.
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duker.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheeler.
Aye.
Welcome, Chair Van Duker, thank you, that passed.
Next item, please, congratulations to the new Chair, the Vice Chair.
Planning manager comments for item six and that is uh planning commissioners academy, Casey.
Sure, well, I'll get a couple of things here. Um thank you, Chair Sheeler, for your service over the last year, much appreciate and a lot of meetings and and appreciate your time and diligence. Um the other thing I did, uh we did move SB nine, Allison is our SB nine expert, so we'll have her come back, I wouldn't do it justice. There's a lot to it, the council, I will say the council adopted their urgency ordinance um to have some. Um criteria applied um beyond what the state law uh would uh would normally require, so so I'll have Allison come back and do a presentation on that at a future meeting. Um we did email out you uh information about the upcoming League of California Cities Planning Commissioners Academy. In March, it's a great opportunity to uh learn and I'll mingle with other commissioners and and. Hear what they're going through, um so some commiseration and learning opportunities, so I really recommend you consider it. Just work with Stacy on uh arranging uh registration and and lodging. Um I do have a couple of best practices, I think we might, we'll see each other between now and then, but um. You know, in terms of um cities um business, when you're traveling, obviously, be on your best behavior, you're representative of the city. When it comes to reimbursement, keep all your receipts and a little trick is to uh take a picture of, you know, your dinner receipt. Before the waiter, before you sign for it, cuz otherwise you don't get that itemized thing and we can't pay for alcohol, unfortunately, sorry. So so those are just a couple of tips, um you are, you would receive a per diem um for food allowance and mileage to and from. But um other than that, you know, um feel free to reach out if you have questions, I very really encourage you to attend that. And just coordinate with Stacy, thank you very much, that's all I have.
Wonderful, thank you very much, Casey, thank you, thank you all, apologies for my tardiness tonight, a little family thing going on. Thank you all, I think we have but much. Thank you all. I think we have much to be proud of this year, especially with the Sunrise Tomorrow project being approved. Thank you all deserve a lot of credit for that. I think it's been great for the future of Citrus Sites. And with that, I'll sign off as chair and you all have a good evening. I close the meeting.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom, for your service.
Thank you. Drop the mic, Tom.